Seven present, zero absence. Item number one, Resolution 20-1168, authorizing the issuance and sale of conduit charter school lease revenue bonds under Minnesota statute, Sections 469.152 through 469.1655, for the Mung College Prep Academy project, 1515 Brewster Street, and approving related documents, District 10, Word 4.
Director Goodman, do you have anything to add? I know we this.
Just briefly, good afternoon, Commissioners, Nicole Goodman here. Just quickly, as a reminder, this item will give final approval for the HRA to issue up to $36 million in conduit charter school lease revenue bonds, again, for the operation of the Mung College Charter Prep Academy. The proceeds would be used to refund existing HRA-issued bonds and to finance the construction of a new building for the middle school. Just to note, there are 2,350 students currently enrolled, and the expansion is necessary only because the current enrollment is more than they can serve within their existing space. The enrollment will not grow from the expansion, it's not to add students. And I will note that there are representatives from the school on the call if there are any questions. They're on mute, but if they need to, if there are questions that need to be answered, they are available for questions.
Great. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Chair Tolbert.
Commissioner Jalali? Commissioner.
Is there a presentation beforehand before we do questions and comments?
I believe that was the presentation.
There's no presentation. There's a board report. If you have... Let me see if there's anything. There is no separate presentation now, I'm sorry.
All right. Commissioner Jalali?
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions if the school is available. There was a discussion last week, or the last time we heard this item within the recent weeks, about making some of the spaces available for public benefit. I would like to revisit those questions that were asked. I don't believe we got through to the school last time, or they weren't available. I believe Council President Brenmon had asked some questions to that effect, and I would like to know whether the school can speak to those questions specifically. I'd like to better understand the facilities plan for what this would entail, whether there are public or green spaces or other such aspects of the campus that are available for community use. It's my current understanding, I hope I'm not incorrect, but I am open to being corrected, that there are parts of the campus right now not open for community use, and I think our city expects a public benefit when we are involved with facilitating these types of transactions, so I'm looking for some information on that. I don't know that we got it last time this commission asked about it.
All right. Who do we have from the school here? Director Goodman, maybe you could...
Let me see.
It looks like someone's on, is it Dr. Hang?
Yes.
Okay. If you... Are you the one that wants to answer the questions?
Yes, I can provide answers to those questions. Can you hear me?
Yep. Could you first just introduce yourself, your name, and where you live?
Absolutely. Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Christiana Hay, and I'm the Superintendent for Mung College Prep Academy. Really great to meet all of you this afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to join you.
Welcome.
There was a question during the last time that you met on August 12 about the usage or making our facility available to the community, and I just wanted to let you know. I sent, we sent in a letter detailing all of the community members, organizations, companies that we have allowed to use our facility for free of charge over the past 14 years since we've been on-site here. Did everybody receive that? Thank you so much. Now, I just want to clarify that we are a public charter school. Like all local school districts, we are a public school, so we do make our facilities available for community members to use, such as like what we list in the letter here. There are hundreds of people that we invite to use our facility for free every single year. For example, you know that we just built that sports dome in 2016, so we made it available. For example, in the morning, we ask citizens, you know, "You can come and run and exercise." We even, you know, in the winter months when there was no space, the St. Paul Police and the sheriffs come and use our sports dome to run their dogs to exercise them. And then, you know, we allow all the militaries to come and recruit our students for free. All the many, many hundreds of universities and colleges come and scout our students and use our space for free. There's also nonprofits and for-profit organizations that come and hold their meetings in here for free. So yes, our facilities are available. Now, there has been people or small groups that asked to lease our facility for long-term, and we want to be very honest with you. We built the sports field, the facilities, for the programs and for our students, and we have about 15-plus different sports and 10 different clubs that run here during the school day and after school. So then, anytime that, of course, our student have to come first, if they want to do long-term lease, we're not able to do that because, number one, you know, we have to make sure that our students get first priority. They practice sports every day after school and even during the weekends. So for long-term lease, we could not do that, like all local districts we have. However, when outside of our programs, we do allow short-term lease. There's organizations that has come to us and, you know, say they want to hold a convention on a Saturday and Sunday. We absolutely, you know, charge them a very minimal fee as long as we have ample time notice, and we're not having a soccer game, or we're not having like a game with other Manscule Sports Conference, because we are part of MHSL Sports. And so, we do allow for them to use, and that little fee that we charge like $500 or to $1,000 if they use it for the whole weekend, is to pay for the, you know, the janitors or our facility security to be available to help them out. So yes, to answer your questions, we have been allowing community members, companies, you just name it, the list goes on, and I provide a very long list for you, and I won't go over all of them, but I just want you to know that we do understand we are a public school, and we do share that with our communities.
Great. Commissioner Jalali?
Thank you. I will allow some of my colleagues in a minute. I just have one more question for now. I know there's a few questions here. I guess I'd like to better understand, could you share a little about the school's history receiving conduit bonds and the different points at which we've, as a city, preceding my time on the council, sponsored that, and then how that fits into your expansion and growth, and then the requests today? I'd like to, it seems like there's been a few times that our city has granted or been a sponsor, and the growth of charter schools in our community is something we're working to manage in a way that is fair and appropriate and has appropriate public benefit. And I have, I guess, I have some questions about the continued requests, and would like to better understand the history of that. So if either staff or the school are available to speak to that, I would appreciate that a lot.
Sure. Absolutely. I will speak to that, and maybe my other colleagues can try and him. I want the Commissioners to know that we had moved our school from Minneapolis to this location in 2006, and if you know this location, the small building that we bought in 2006 with the first issued bonds in 2006 through HRA was to renovate and make sure we have classroom, because when we brought our students here, we have about 400-plus, sorry, 200-plus kids, and the facility was an elementary school, and we have high schoolers. So we didn't have enough space for our kids' programming, and that's why we borrowed the first $10 million to renovate and made it worked. And then our enrollment grew from there, and as we, as you know, we're a K-12 charter, so then we added the middle school, and that's when we ran out of space. And there was a time that our students were out in the modulators outside for like two years, and that's why we borrowed the bond in 2012. And as you know, that as a charter school, we are not allowed to levy tax to build buildings or have free facilities. Therefore, that's the reason why that we have to have a sister building company to work with, you know, partnerships like HRA to issue conduit bonds in order to build and to expand the buildings, to lease it back to the school, in order to save money for the classrooms and not using so much of tax levying money. So then, we added the middle school, and we grew from 600 to 1,000 kids, and that's when we, and then it grew from 1,000 kids to 5,000 kids, because now we are K-12. In 2010, we added all fully K-12, and that's the reason why we had to come back, and we only had the middle school to work with, and now we have K-12 kids, and they didn't have enough space. Therefore, the board had met a lot about it, and there was a demand from the community. So therefore, we came back to you in 2016 to ask for another bond in order to build on our space and new elementary school. And so now that we are fully K-12, this building is built for about 2,200 kids, and it's just that we have such a high demand, and we service, you know, students from all over the metropolitan area. And St. Paul, we service about 66%, and the rest come from the Minneapolis-Burgton Park Works and Center. We just have a high demand because we're K-12, and our parents want to bring their elementary, their middle school, their high school together so they can help each other. And so therefore, that's the reason why, you know, when we borrowed the money in 2016, that bond, we bought the land across the street, which you guys know where located, right in the Como-Snelling area. There's no more land, and that land across the street was a bus company. It was a very toxic land, and we spent $5 million to buy that land, plus $3 million from the bond to clean up all the toxic that was there, and that's why we ran out of money. Otherwise, we would not have to come back today to ask you for another conduit bond. And today, we're only asking to build more classrooms for the kids we already have. And you know, there's a street right across from the, across the street from that 10-acre land that we bought in US, it's called Brewster Street, and that's a residential street. And our, you know, of course, our neighbors are great, but they drive very fast, 35, 40 miles per hour, and that's the reason why we had to, we met as a board, and they decided, "Let's build a skyway that will connect the two buildings so that it's safe for our teachers and staff to cross, to come across the street for lunch." And so all we're asking is, is more classrooms to make sure that our students have adequate space to learn, and, you know, to close that achievement gap. We got to give that equity to our kids. That's the reason why we're back, Mitra, to have this partnership with HRA, to hope that you would help us make sure that we have adequate space in the city of St. Paul here, and making our school great for the students that we serve, the 2,350 students.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was a long answer.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Jalali, do you have more questions?
I don't have more questions. I would like, I certainly have thoughts and comments, and I'm also, I recognize others have questions they haven't gotten to get to, I'm going to hold off. So if others would like to weigh in, I appreciate that.
Maybe, I know, I think a lot of people probably have comments to say, maybe if we can go through the questions first, and then we can all do comments after, but since we have Dr. Hang on the line at this moment, if other people have questions, do you want to do a hand wave? It looks like Commissioner Yang and Commissioner Brenmon have questions. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thanks, Chair Tolbert. Hi, Dr. Hang. I'm just looking at the board report that we have here, and it says that in October 2012, the HRA issued $17 million, 1,706,000, I'm sorry, I might be saying my number wrong, $17,600,000 in conduit lease revenue bonds for the existing school building. Can you share what the school, your enrollment cap was that year?
So during that 2010, we have about, I believe we have about 1,200 kids, and at that time, we didn't have any more space for our high schoolers. And so the 2012 bond that we borrowed was to build that three-level high school for our high schoolers. And so from there, we had grew, and that's one of the reasons why we had to come back for the 2016. So that 17 million was to build the high school, the three-level for them. Remember I mentioned and told you that when we first got here, the facility that we bought was to fit all of the kids, and we didn't have any space, so therefore, our kids were outside in the modulators when we added the middle schoolers, and then when we added the K-5. So that is what that money was used for, in order to have adequate space for our students.
Thank you, and then I just have a follow-up too. So the second time that the HRA issued a conduit bond, that was at the amount of 44,005, about 500,000. What was your school enrollment at that time then?
So at the time, our enrollment was already at 20, I believe it was 2,100 students already. So we already was over by a couple hundred kids, and that's why we don't have any more space. So, you know, we, that is the reason why that we came back for the 2016, to build a new elementary school, so that our kids are not mushed together in one small space. So if you looked at our drawings, the school that we, the original building we bought is in the middle, and then we built the high school on the east wing, and then we built the elementary on the west wing on our parking lot. So that, and so our building now fits about 2,200 students, and we already know that, you know, our cap is going to be at 2,350. For the middle schoolers, they are the ones that need the space the most. Our elementary is fine, and our high schools are fine. As you know, our middle schoolers around 650 students already, so that is the only reason why we need to build the space in order to not have a class size of 30 and 35. And that's what we're looking for, and because, you know, when we first borrowed that 2016 bond, we used so much money to clean up the land and to buy the land across, we didn't have enough money to do the internal renovation, where like our lunchroom is small, it's only built for 2,200 kids. And so now we have 2,350, and we have students standing on the walls eating breakfast and lunch, and that's one of the, another, you know, space where we are going to use this new 2020 bond to just make the lunchroom bigger, and to make the classrooms available, as well as all of our specialists such as ESL students. I don't know if I, we didn't go there yet, but we have about 35% ESL students, and we need, the specialist classes need to be, have space. So for example, our middle school, we have 35 classes, and we have 45 teachers. So we have traveling teachers going to, using, you know, sharing classes, two or three in a classroom, or they're traveling, and it's, we have, you know, classrooms of 30, 35 kids, and it's hard for our students. That's why the board has decided for us to come back and ask HRA for this expansion.
Yeah, thank you. That second HRA bond was in 2016, and so this request that we have on the table here is the third, would be the third request that's in front of the HRA, and, you know, I'm just noticing the time span, because in less than a decade, then this would be, already be the third request, and in the proposal from the board, one of the things that you all mentioned is that right now you are over capacity within your existing space. Your cap is at 2,350, and, you know, based on like the two prior HRA, you know, conduit bonds that the council here voted on, I'm just curious to how you got into the situation that you are now, in which you are over capacity within your existing space, because how I imagine it is that in order to come up with your cap, you probably would have to analyze how much your school can actually, how many students you can hold, and what is actually a reasonable number for that. So how do you justify being in the position that you are now, being over capacity within your existing space?
Well, we, you know, our goal was to make sure that we stay capped, but because we have such a high demand from the community, you know, our parents are not, they don't come just with one kid, they come with, for example, you know, we service predominantly Asian students, or particularly Mung students, and the families come with like a high schooler, a middle schooler, and two elementary, and they like their kids to stay all in one school because the bigger kids could help the little kids, you know, and that's one of the reasons why that we have grown to be, you know, the enrollment that we're at today. But we do, we do recognize that, you know, we are not planning to grow anymore, or, you know, we're not asking to build a second site, we're not looking forward to that. We do know that we want to provide a high-quality education, that is why we want to make sure that our enrollment is capped at 2,350, and that helps, I hope that that answers your question as to why our enrollments keep going up. It's not because we, you know, did not want to cap it, it's because, you know, the demand from the parents, they would like to have their students all in one place. So therefore, you know, it's not like widgets where you can just say, okay, you know, students aren't just widgets, and you can say, okay, well, I'll take this one, but not that one if the parents want their kids to come, and, you know, those who we don't have room for, we put them on the waiting list.
So in 2012 and 2016, you had a cap for your school, is that right?
That is correct. We did have, we did have a cap for our school. However, our, because of the demand from the community, we, you know, such as the families, for example, we might have 2,350 students, but they're not individual students. We have like a total of nine to 1,000 families together that makes up those kids.
So is there, is there a penalty at all then for schools that, you know, breach their cap?
What do you mean by penalty?
Like, I don't know if, I'm curious to whether a cap is like, is basically like a rule or some sort of law where a school has to actually, you know, be at or below that number, and are there penalties if a school actually enrolls more than what they state their cap to be?
I believe that in public schools, there is not a penalty to, you know, if you meet your cap and you, let's say that you, you know, you may enroll a few more people because you have the same kids coming from the same family members. So, and, you know, of course, we discuss that with the board all the time. Here's what we have. Here, you know, there are more demand than what is, what are enrollment available? I mean, I'm sorry, our counts are available, you know, do we want to take these kids, or we want to refuse them? You know, we talk about all that, and therefore, that's the reason why that we accept the kids, because, you know, they, to keep them together and to make sure that they are able to help each other as family members.
Okay, thank you. Chair Tolbert, I just have a few more questions, but I think I might yield to some other commissioners first before I ask mine.
Commissioner Brenmon, and I do see Commissioner Prince did raise her hand, so, but Commissioner Brenmon?
Hi there, and I, this is, I have a few questions for the school administration, and then again, also some comments later, but I do, first of all, I want to thank you, Dr. Hang, for being here today, for joining us, and for coming to speak with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority at the City Council. You're clearly, the enrollment number of 2,350, you know, while you may be busting at the seams, also says to me that you're providing a service that there's many community members that are really happy with, and I think that that's something to be proud of. My, one of my questions was going to be, what percent of your resident, or what percent of your student base was from St. Paul, and you said 66%, which is 1,500 of your students, and I just want to acknowledge that. I appreciate the service that you're providing to those kids from our community very much, and I do thank you for being here today. Last, at our last HRA meeting, I did bring up the point that I had reached out to the school, I think in March, asking questions about access to the facilities at the academy, simply because I represent part of Como. Ms. Jalali represents the part of Como that your school is in, and I had not seen any sort of, you know, connection to community events or sharing your capacity with community. And so I appreciate the list that you sent to us this week. I'm sorry that I did not get a chance to talk to you in person about that, but I do appreciate the list. I feel like there are opportunities for the school to do more, to communicate more aggressively with the community about what access points. I think the indoor walking is wonderful, and so I encourage you to continue to find ways to partner with the community. Things like, you're off to a good start, and I would say there's definitely room to do more. But I also do want to just share that as I'm listening to, you know, the report and to the answers to some of the questions, that we, as the city, struggle with the same kind of crowding that you're talking about in all of our schools. We have challenges with children, with streets where folks are driving fast, that our kids have to cross to get to schools all across the city, and so these are challenges that we face, and we recognize our, it's a big deal, and it's, but it's something that we face across the city. So it's challenging for me to hear, you know, that we're processing additional funding to create skyways for kids to cross the street to go to a covered astrodome turf field, when I have kids that are crossing streets that are much busier and have much more traffic. And so I'm trying to really listen to what, you know, what kind of, what are the differences between the challenges we have at different schools across the city, and how do we approach these things in an equitable way, and what is our role in all of this? So I guess it's less than a question, but I just wanted to acknowledge that I do appreciate that you followed up with your information about your work with the community. I would like to press you, press you to do more, and I'd also, I'd just like to raise awareness to the fact that the challenges that you're facing are the challenges that we're facing across the city in our public schools, particularly with traffic and crowding, and access to fields and play areas, and to the extent that we can be community partners here, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, and I really appreciate your comments, Commissioner Primar. I want to let you know that if you look at the budget, we are, the school is going to contribute about $8 million of our general funds to actually build the skyway. So the skyway is going to cost about 1.5 million. It is not going to come from this bond, the 17 million that we are asking, I'm sorry, the, the part that we are asking from HRA for the conduit issuance. So just to make that clear, I understand, you know, we have tried very hard the last three, four years to work with the city of St. Paul, just to get like stop signs, or to, you know, put like markways in the street so that the, you know, the cars will slow down, because the reason why we had, we had decided to build the skyway is because now if we built the middle school, they're not just going to the dome, you know, to an empty dome. We actually have little kids, like four or five classrooms, grade 1, 2, 3, go and actually have PE inside the dome, and that's on an hourly basis, and they also go there in the winter to play for, you know, recess, because we have no place to go, you know, and so I, it's, we don't, you know, if we had an opportunity to put a stop sign there, we would. We worked with the city of St. Paul, the, you know, the coordinates, the traffic, we've done all of that, and that's why we arrived at this decision with the board, that they would like to make sure that we... um, we really address the safety of the students and the staff and the teachers at this school. Because, you know, all we need is one kid to get run over, you know, and then it's done. And, and we, we can't have that. We are fearful every day. And we, we have our staff, of course, you know, they, they raise their flags, they wear yellow jackets, they watch the kids cross every hour of the day. And so if we could minimize, um, you know, any type of unsafe situation with this, um, you know, building that we're going to build for classrooms for the kids, that we would like to do that. And that's, that's, um, that's why we arrived at that decision. So I really appreciate, um, you know, the comment and absolutely, can we do more with the communities? Absolutely. We, we want to do more, you know, we are open. And just letting you know with the new, uh, with this new plan, we're building a, a robotic suite. And, um, in case, I know many of you may not know, but H C P A want a twenty-five thousand dollar grant with education. To come and use our space going forward. So absolutely, um, making it available for everybody to utilize. Um, you know, just, just to let all of you know that that's going to be available. Now, Crystal, I, I see my part, my, um, board chair has her hand up. She would like to add something. Commissioners, may I have your permission?
No, just a moment, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Brenmon, I, did you have any?
Yeah, I just, I just, I, I know we have a lot of ground to cover here, so I, I want to make sure that we move along. I, I just wanted to say that I really, I'm trying hard not to operate in kind of the scarcity mode, like the things that you're talking about, safety for our kids, crossing our streets, good facilities are things we want for all of our kids. And so I appreciate your doing that. And I'm just wanted to share that we struggle. Um, this is a problem that our schools across the city face and, and I'm, I'm looking forward to a day where the state funding is available for all of our schools to be able to have these amenities.
All right, thank you.
And then that is not a comment necessarily at, at the, the school in particular, just broadly. So I don't necessarily, um, need a response to that.
All right, uh, Director Hang, is it Crystal Rabidou? And I may be saying that wrong. Is that who is the board?
Miss, Miss Crystal Rabidou.
Miss Rabidou, would you introduce yourself and say where you live? And, um, it sounds like you have things that you'd like to add? I think you're on, on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can, thank you.
Okay, I, okay. So thank you Chair Tober for inviting us to the H R A meeting. Um, my name is Crystal Rabidou. I'm a third grade teacher and board chair at H C P A. I live in downtown St. Paul, so I am a, a St. Paul resident. Um, I would like to just briefly add to what Dr. Hang was saying to address the Skyway. Um, as she indicated, those funds would not be coming from the H R A, from the conduit fund. Um, but I wanted to also, as a teacher of often tw- at, at least twenty-five students every year, having with regards to safety, um, and seeing bus dismissal, talking about the safety of needing the Skyway. Um, as Dr. Hang alluded, we do have students that need to cross the street to go use the playground facilities, the sports field for recess or for gym. We also, um, this would also help the community from not having to stop the traffic that goes past, that goes on Brewster Street. In addition to, um, bus dismissal, when we are trying to release two thousand three hundred fifty students, that can be, um, hold up traffic quite a bit when we're trying to release classes at that time. Um, and I'd like to bring back the purpose of the bond is to refinance existing debt and improve facilities to educate the existing number of students. Um, the past few years, I've seen teachers and support staff struggling to find space to work with students. Often this means teaching and supporting students in the cafeteria because this is the only space available. Um, I've also noticed at breakfast, many of our middle school and high school students are unable to sit down at a table to eat their breakfast. They're having to stand, um, or find a place in the hallway. Some students ha, um, so, um, we are asking for your support. The expansion is about the students. H C P A strives to provide, um, students with, um, with the, what they need to succeed, to do, so that their future, um, so that they can give back to the fu, to the community. Um, we've also have heard it takes a village to raise a child. This is true becau, this is true. Together in St. Paul, we are a village. We are a community. We all want the best for our children and for our community. As a St. Paul resident, I want to know that each child is receiving the best that our community has to offer them.
All right, thank you, uh, Ms. Rabidou. I do know that we have quite a few questions left and I know my colleagues all have statements. So, um, Commissioner Prince, I believe, is next. Um, maybe if we can just make sure to just answer the questions that are being asked because I'm starting to get nervous about us cutting close to our council time based on how much more of this H R A meeting we have left as well. Uh, Commissioner Prince, I know you have some questions. And I believe you're on mute. Still on mute.
Go ahead.
There you go. Nope.
God.
I think we can hear you actually.
Yeah, yeah.
You can? Okay, there we go. Thank you Chair Tober. And, um, Dr. Hang, my, my questions are for you. And I think, um, Auntie Miss, uh, Robidou, just a comment, um, to, to Commissioner Brenmon's point. I think what you need to understand that we're all struggling with here is that we are providing, um, low-cost financing to you, um, to serve your students. And it seems like your, your growth, while you're claiming to, to be honoring a cap, your growth sounds to me like it is, um, it's kind of out of control. I mean, I, it's not clear to me why you would be continuing to accept students who cannot sit in the lunchroom for lunch or where class sizes would, would be, or where, you know, students would be stuck in a hallway for whatever the reason were that you gave. So I'm, I'm very concerned about the, the focus on growth that you have. Uh, because our interest as H R A commissioners and as council members is to look out for our whole city and as, as Commissioner Brenmon said, all our kids and all their safety and all of their quality education. And, um, I just, I am very concerned about what seems to me to be, um, the growth mode that you're in to council, to Commissioner Yang's point. And also, I mean, that is very much, I have been on a charter school board and I have also worked for a private school. And that is something that is controlled through your admissions process and your recruitment. So I, I, I guess I need to understand if you're, if you're just going forward with, you know, as long as you can get them in the door, you're going to find room for them. And that will continually be asked to, um, as we have been, I mean, this is remarkable that you've been back three times to expand and improve your facilities, um, with, with unchecked growth. So I, I hope you'll address the, the growth, recruitment and admissions work that you do because it is possible to control that. You put people on a waitlist. Believe it or not, there are other good schools in our community that may have space for those students. And so please explain where, what you are thinking about that admissions process.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Dr. Hang, go.
Yep. Uh, thank you Commissioner Tober for your comments. I really appreciate that. Uh, yes, we are looking at, um, capping and, you know, our cap was at twenty-three fifty, you know, to begin with. So when we built this building, like I mentioned to you in twenty sixteen, we just, um, used the money up in order to clean up that space. That's why we didn't build enough, we couldn't build enough space. And that's why we're back. Otherwise, uh, we would not be back and having this conversation because our facility would have been available then. So yes, I, we are, um, you know, we do have waiting lists and we do put people on the waiting list. We're not admitting any more than what we can handle. And we're not admitting, uh, kids, just to admit them for the quantity, you know? We want quality education for our students. That's the reason why we have the cap at the twenty-three fifty. So to, um, to your point, are we going to just accept everybody and anybody? The answer is no. Um, we are going, the reason why we're here to ask for the money in order to make sure that we have the classroom that we should have had in twenty sixteen, it was just because we had too much, uh, toxic to clean up across the street. So just to make that clear, um, so that, that, that helps you understand why we're back. It's not because we just keep on enrolling and then come back to ask you for more. Um, that is not the reason here at all.
Thank you. And then on the issue of your facilities, I do appreciate that you sent an email and that you followed up with me on that. I do want to say that, um, and I think other council members have made this point, but when I looked at the list, it looked like many of the groups that you were allowing to use the building, for instance, the colleges and universities are coming to recruit your students. So that I would say is an event that you're hosting for your students and not so much, um, sharing with the broader community. And I did, in particular, just, and this is a comment, you don't need to answer it, but I did get a, an email from a constituent of mine who works for the school, um, who said that he felt that much more could be done to make the school facilities available to, to camps, clubs and other organ, youth organizations that really could use that space. And I think about just in terms of that neighborhood, um, Dugzi Academy is the Somali charter school that's on, on snelling not too far from where you are. And that is, I mean, I could see there being a really valuable partnership with that school because your athletic facilities are so far beyond what they're able to have in their small space. So I just want to say that if, if this does go through, I hope that the groups that you, um, work with on sharing your space are groups that vitally need that space. And it's youth organizations in our community. There are many underfunded ones and lots of underserved youth in St. Paul who, um, would just really benefit from being able to play soccer in a, in a sports dome. So, so thank you for the list you provided and please continue to do more work in that direction.
Absolutely.
And Commissioner, Commissioner Tao, I know you have some questions?
Um, thank, thank you, uh, Chair Tober. I'm, I'm just curious, um, that we're, we're running out of time here and, and, uh, we're, we're asking a lot of questions that, I think part of asking these questions is because the process that we're in. Um, I've never seen any other charter school that come before us uh, or folks who ask for conduit bond that get this kind of questions. Um, and so I think it's really important that we're doing that. But I wonder if race has anything to play with this because the reason why the charter school is very successful is because they provide programs that, uh, are what the parents are looking for. Parents once get to go to their, and these are parents I talked to, they, they want their, um, and some of these parents are, are employees of the city, right? And so they want a place where they can send their kids so their kids can learn about other cultures and other language, but their own culture and their own history. And they believe that by their kids learning about their history and their culture and the culture and the history of other classmates in the world around them, it makes them better citizens. And they provide transportation that are picked up at the door. Uh, while the city of St. Paul, our school, you know, we're sending our kids to go to school six-thirty in the morning. And so, you know, I, I think, I think let's look at what, what they're doing well and why, why kids want to go there? Why do they want to send their, why does parents want to send their kids there? If, 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 for example, if, uh, Afro Deli, it's a good restaurant, we can't fault them for being a good restaurant. They're a good restaurant because they have good quality service and they, they pay their, uh, employee well. And they have good food, they have good community, uh, uh, you know, a, a good program that they serve the community. So, so I think we should be asking ourselves why they're doing well and so that we can model that, right? Like, I, if we're start asking, why, why don't you cap? Like, what is the underlying tone there? Are we capping so that all the other kids that can't go there could go to the St. Paul school? The other, uh, public school? Like, what, what are, what are we really asking here? They've already said to us that, uh, the reason why they needed more, uh, help was because they used that fund to clean up. We wouldn't want our kids, anybody's kid, to go to a, a contaminated area, right? And so they're doing, they're taking the responsibility to do that. And we talk in terms of equity, like I feel like as a Monge American and as an elected and the kind of question that we're, we're handing them today, I want it to be this consistent when anybody come before us for conduit bond.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Tao. Um, does anyone else have que, Commissioner Yang?
Sure, first, uh, yeah, Chair Tober, I do have questions. Um, and, uh, thank you so much. And also thank you Director Hang. I know that you have spent a lot of time here with us and we actually have a couple of things on the agenda too, but we really appreciate your time. And, um, I, Chair Tober, I just want to affirm that, um, this is a, this has been a long conversation, but also necessary. And all of us on the table are commissioners, but we are also council members. And our next meeting starts at three-thirty. We have an entire half an hour that we can use to actually spend on this. Um, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that we have the extra half hour. And so I want to actually do diligence to this conversation. And the reason why it's important to me is because, um, you know, charter schools, I, I've talked to a lot of educators and folks who are in charter schools who always affirm to me, yes, they are a public school. And so I agree, you know, yes, they are. And so that's why they should be here, you know, um, on, with H R A under like deep screening about how they are doing and how effective they are. And, and us having deeper conversations, not just about expansions, but, but about the progress that they are making. And this is really important to me because as an elected official, I feel like I'm in my role to build toward a future where kids and families across race, class and gender, age and disability, um, can belong in our community and you go, can go to schools that work for them. And, um, and we have questions about that. We have questions about the transparency of charter schools. We have questions about their accountability. And we have questions that, um, we are asking now that are directly from our constituents. And I have many of them that I, I'm more than happy to ask at this moment. And so, um, this is really important time and we need to really, you know, spend, uh, time on this and make sure that all those questions are asked. And I also want to name that I'm a woman of color, I'm a Monge person. And I know that this is Monge College Prep Academy that we're talking about. And I, I did affirm in a statement in, on, on my social media page that this is not about Monge College Prep Academy for me. This is about, um, this is about how we as an H R A board really govern when it comes to charter schools coming asking for conduit bonds. We don't have a screening process for this. And so to my knowledge, if there was a private company, let's say like a reform company that wanted to come and invest and develop every single charter school in, or in the city of St. Paul and came to the H R A to ask for these conduit bonds, we wouldn't, we don't have a ceiling on how many dollars we can agree to or, or pass. And we also, um, because we don't have that screening. And so, um, I think that this is, um, a conversation that will lead us to be able to build that. But it, it doesn't mean that we can't have that conversation now. And so, um, so what I'm saying here, this is exactly how, I will show up every single time. We do have a charter school in front of the H R A board. And, um, I will allow you all to hold me accountable to that as well. So, um, that being said, I am wondering whether salaries for a superintendent, for example, and, and let's say for this scenario, Monge College Prep Academy, is the salary for a superintendent public information?
Um, yes, it is. It's actually absolutely public. We are a public school, so all of our salaries are public and our boards, uh, do set those salaries, just so you know, Ms. Yang.
Awesome. So, um, how, how much does a superintendent make? And then what is like the, the average salary for educators in your classrooms then?
Uh, well, uh, you know, for charter schools or depends, we are one of the biggest charter school in Minnesota here, or one of them. You know, and I am a licensed superintendent. I do have a doctorate degree. So they do set the salary, uh, competitive based on other So they do set the salary, uh, competitive based on other superintendents um, around the state, similarly to the, the size of the school. Uh, my responsibility, you know, I do play it more than just a role of a superintendent. I am academic, like the principal too, um, because, you know, charter schools are small. We don't have the, um, necessity or, or the means to hire a lot of heavy administration. We do keep administrations to like three or four people and hire more classroom teachers and put the money back in the classroom. So, you know, I, I want, uh, you to know that it is, uh, weighed upon on the responsibilities that I have. Now, our teachers makes the average about forty-five thousand dollar average. Uh, we pay less than our local districts because we only have twenty-three fifty students and not three thirty-five thousand students. But we do, um, pay as, as compatible and better than, uh, many of the smaller charter schools. Um, you know, we get, and just, just so you know, we are, uh, held very to high, high standard of accountability and transparency because we have an authorizer like Bathory University is always here supervising us, making sure in, in all of our board meetings, we have, you know, over, oversight by the Department of Education. We have oversight by so many people in the public and the communities as well as our parents that, uh, we serve. So we are very transparent, everything that we do in terms of finance, in terms of our salaries, um, in terms of the ways that we operate.
What is the number, the public salary then that appears next to the line for a superintendent of Mung, um, College Prep, for example?
Oh, well, for example, the average, uh, for someone like me would be around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy. That's an average, um, but on my twenty-five years of experience with a doctorate degree.
Okay.
And that is definitely an average, um, compared to other districts around. Um, you know, uh, we're talking about pub, public school superintendents, right? And we're talking about licensed superintendents who are in similar situation as myself.
Can you, can you explain where, um, certain claims around pay inequity from our public community would be coming from them when they do talk about our charter school system?
Sure. It, and I, I think that that's just, um, there is a lot of misunderstanding. For example, there was an article right after you, you, you know, the commissioners met on eight twelve about that, you know, um, you know, I made X amount of money, uh, over that one year. And that's not true. That was a, um, you know, exaggerating number of, um, for example, uh, yeah, um, over like three years of period time. So I'm not sure where they got that number from. But, you know, in terms of other charter schools, their board governs their salaries. I cannot speak for everyone. I can only speak for Mung College Prep Academy. But I do know that our board looks at all of our teacher salary scale, uh, you know, all of the non-teaching, um, salary scales. They set my, my salary, they set everyone else's salary here. And, um, it goes, uh, you know, they do studies, they do, um, comparisons to ten or, ten or plus different schools around the states here and then they set the salary. So those are all done very transparently and, um, you know, and, and we let everybody know it's not a secret.
Thank you so much for, for that. Um, you know, I, I hope that it, it provides like the folks the answers that they want, especially for those who do have that question. Um, and I'm curious to, um, can you share whether or not right now your school is under a state or federal investigation?
Um, absolutely not. We are not under any type of investigation. So, um, you know, I, you know, you brought earlier, uh, a point about maybe student achievement, right? And what are we doing? You know, we talked about this building expansion. It's not just to have beautiful buildings to, to look nice. Um, it's because we want to make sure we continue the quality education so that our students can continue to, uh, you know, become just productive citizens when they're done. If they want to go to a two-year or four-year college. I, I just want to share with you, uh, Commissioner Yang and, and all the commissioners that A C P for, A C P A is a high-performing charter school. We are not, um, a school that is, is just, um, you know, having nice facility to do nothing. So I'll give you an example. Um, our graduation rate last year, a hundred percent of our students graduate. And then the years before that, average about ninety, ninety-five percent students graduate on time. And we have about eighty, eighty-five percent acceptance to two-year or four-year colleges with like five-point-five million dollar scholarships. Most of our kids are much like you, Ms. Yang and myself, who come from poverty's background. You know, majority of, uh, of them are Asian ethnicity or they're Mung. They are probably first-time college, um, student, you know? In their family, they're the first to go to college. Some of them never even dream about going to college until they come to A C P A because they feel like this is their school, this is a place they belong. That's why they all want to come. It's not because, you know, we just don't know how to cap our enrollment or it's, it's not because we're building beautiful building to impress people. We provide the best education possible here. And, you know, our, you know, our motto is, we do whatever it takes for our kids. We don't hold back, you know? And, and like our sister local districts, we want to be partners with them. We are not their competition. We are nobody's competition. We want, we're all in this together. Our, our job is education and our jobs is to provide the best for, you know, our future leaders. And I want my students to grow up to be just like you, just like all of you here. You know, a future commissioner, a future city council member. They dream about becoming the next Paul Yang, the next judge. Or maybe someday, maybe the next, you know, president. You know, I, I, we, we as a, you know, as a team here and as educators, we believe that much in our students and our families. That's why we come to you again is not to ask to build beautiful buildings that we won't share with the community. We're asking for adequate classrooms so we can provide adequate education for our students. You all know, I mean, I'm preaching to the choir, right? Bigger class size, kids can't learn. We're trying to keep our class size to average of twenty-five per teacher. And we've been very successful doing that, you know? And, and we pay attention to every single student, even the ones that get pushed out, dropped out, kicked out or want to join games. They come here and they feel like, you know, I can finally learn and I can finally graduate on time. And that's what we're all about. Sorry about that.
No, thank you. Thank you for that. Um, and then I just have, um, one, one question for you. I'm curious to whether, um, as a superintendent or folks in your administration, whether you have, um, uh, have you, have you ever used, you know, your own staff time to look through emails at all to see whether there are efforts of unionizing amongst your educators? And have any staff ever been, um, been punished by maybe losing their job for these efforts?
Absolutely not. I have never, ever, uh, not allowed my staff to talk about anything or talk to me. My, I have an open-door policy, you know? And I'm not the only administrator have two, I have two, one elementary director, which is like in the local district would be principal. And the, and a, a six, twelve secondary directors, they were not called them principal because they are directors here, academic directors. The way that charter schools, um, function is we, we have a few of us. So we do many, we wear many different hats. But never have I ever, um, tell my staff or teachers that they cannot talk about unionize or anything like that, you know? Um, as you know, charter schools exist.
Do, would you be in support of, of staff members in your school unionizing?
Uh, you know, I, I am not against it. I, you know, and I don't know if you know, but I am from the Minneapolis School District. I used to work there. So I am very familiar with the unions and I was in local union fifty-six and fifty-nine. So I'm very familiar with that. And now I just want you to, um, I mean, the commissioners all, all know this already. Charter school Minnesota, uh, obviously was the first state to enact the charter school law. Um, and part of the charter school law is to be free of union. It's not a bad thing, it's not a good thing if, uh, you know, it's, it's a choice. So, um, you know, I, I would say that I'm not against it, but I'm not going to say that, you know, I have ever, um, tell staff or teachers not to do that.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Chair Toby. That's the end of my questions.
Thank you and, and thank you, uh, Dr. Hang and, um, and Ms. Rabidu for joining us. Um, I do have a few questions for staff.
Chair, Chair Toby? Sorry about that. Um, I, I apologize. My, um, Jay Squire had his hands up for a while.
I don't think we have any questions for him right now.
Okay.
So I think, okay, thank you. This, it's a, it's a public hearing, so it's, or it's not a public hearing. That's why, uh, earlier when I, um, cut off, tried to limit the conversation, it wasn't to limit our questions, it was to save time for questions.
Right.
It was because this isn't a public hearing and it sounded like speeches were being given by the public. And not that we're against that, um, but this is a discussion and I want to keep us on track since we have seven more items. So thank you, Director Hang. I think we're, we've had all our questions for you answered at this point in the school. But I do have a question for Director Goodman. Uh, Director Goodman, could you just, uh, give, uh, overview of the action here today and what conduit bonds mean and, um, how it interacts with the city and why, um, um, an entity would approach the city to get conduit bonds?
I will. I, um, I, I do have staff on the line who is more experienced with this. I'm, I'm new to the state and new to this process just in, for the past couple of weeks. But as, uh, mentioned before, this is a conduit bond. So we're, we sort of function as a pass-through. It's not city or H R A funds or that we're, we're not obligated for repayment. Um, but I have Jenny Wolf from our staff on the line. Um, Jenny, are you available just to elaborate on that a bit?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, this is Jenny Wolf with P D, um, Chair Toby, Commissioners. Um, so the, the conduit bonds that are, um, requested here are due to the fact that this is a qualifying nonprofit entity and a nonprofit, qualifying nonprofit entity can access a conduit issuer, issuer such as the H R A. And through that issue, they are able to get, um, access to tax-exempt interest rates for those bonds. Um, but as, um, Director Goodman said, the city and H R A are not responsible for paying back those bonds. Everything about the bonds are based on what the schools or the borrower's ability to repay is. The interest rate is set based on their repayment, the terms, all of that. Um, all we are is a conduit and they have to be a qualifying entity to, for us to issue the bonds for them. And a charter school is a qualifying nonprofit entity. Um, and we do bu, conduit bonds for other nonprofit entities such as healthcare um, and some housing projects that are run through nonprofits like Show Home. So hopefully that addresses the question, Chair Toby, or do you have more?
No, that's perfect. That's, um, the exact information I was looking for. Could you just explain a little bit what, what is a qualifying entity? What is our policy in terms of who can apply or who qualify, who we consider qualifying entity? Or is that based on, um, other factors? And maybe just our, um, just a few examples of other conduit bonds that we've had in the, in the recent past?
Um, sure. So we, we don't define the type of applicant. Um, we set our policies around conduit bond issues on what the issue itself looks like as long as they qualify. So Bond Council will make sure that that entity is qualifying under the federal rules. Um, and so they will scrutinize that. But in terms of the H R A's policies, we look to, if they're a qualifying applicant, they apply, um, to us for those bonds. And then we look at are they conforming to our policies? And we do have policies around the fees that we charge and we have policies around the way the bonds are, um, put in the marketplace um, so that we make sure it's clear and evident that there is no backing by the H R A or the city of St. Paul since our name will be on those bonds. Um, so those are the policies we look at. Um, but in terms of who is a qualifying nonprofit, um, that really has to be determined by Bond Council um, to make sure that that entity qualifies. Um, and then every application that we get, um, obviously it has to be sponsored, um, by one of the seven commissioners. So the next step is to make sure that the, that a sponsor is ready to carry that, um, request through H R A.
Okay. And, um, Ms. Bolton, are, it looks like you're on the line, Jenny Bolton, Bond Council?
Yes, I am on the line.
Could you expand on what Ms., could you expand on what Ms. Wolf was talking about?
Yes, so.
What you look for, for qualifying entities?
Right. This is not a financial analysis. This is a legal analysis of whether or not the entity is a qualified five oh one C three organization. Uh, that is a, a reference to a section in the tax code. Um, it means it's a charitable educational type of organization. And we get a legal opinion from the legal counsel to that, um, entity and we review organizational documents and, um, their, um, their operational practices and financial information for purposes of determining that they meet that qualification, but not for determining whether or not they're, they're financially qualified. That is a different analysis.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Um, it looks like, um, we've got a couple of people with, uh, their hands up. Commissioner Jalali? You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Um, I don't have further questions. I guess I'd like to know whether people actually have further questions because I would like to, um, be able to move forward. And we do actually have other items today. It's not just this one. I'm appreciating the conversation. I think there's a lot we've discussed, but I did want to be mindful. There's about four other things to do before three-thirty. So, um, would like to, I'm simply asking from a point of clarification if other people have questions right now with their hands raised or if they have comments.
All right. Because it, it sounds like Commissioner Jalali has comments. Does anyone have, that has their hands up? Do they have actual questions or is it comments?
I have a question, Jane Prince.
Commissioner Prince?
My question is for Ms. Wolf. Um, Ms. Wolf, you, you described to me that part of our fee on part of this, um, conduit bond issue is going toward the refinancing. Can you explain that to me? It looked like it was, it would be some certain amount per year and now it's going to be twenty-five thousand per year because, anyway, if you could just explain that part of the board report, it wasn't clear to me.
Yes, um, thank you for the question, Commissioner Prince, Chair Toby and Commissioners. Um, so what I was trying to explain is our fees, um, that we collect annually, so not at the closing, but annually are based on the outstanding balance of the bond. So as part of this transaction is a refinancing and the twenty-twelve bonds will be paid off. We will no longer collect fees from that bond. So we will be collecting fees on the new twenty-twenty bond. And so I was just trying to give you the net increase since the one fee will go away and a new fee will come in. And so we, we currently we're getting about twenty thousand a year on the existing bonds and the new bonds will generate about forty-six thousand annually. And so that's the net increase, about twenty-five, twenty-six thousand.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. And I just want to make one additional comment. And this is specifically to Councilmember Tao or Commissioner Tao, but also to, to all of us. We have struggled with conduit bond issues over the last few years. This is not the first time we've had this kind of conversation about the public impact of something that we're doing. And we voted against, or I actually think Concordia University withdrew their request because we had raised public impact issues of using low-cost financing for a nonprofit taking property off the tax rolls. So I am making a commitment by way of this comment that I am happy to head up any kind of a group that wants to pull together and come up with policies for this council to use for looking at conduit bonds. Because I agree that, that shooting from the hip is not what we should be doing. But what we definitely should be doing is considering the public impact of what we are doing here. And, and it is not, the conversation we are having here is not inappropriate.
Thank you. All right. Um, does anyone else have questions? Otherwise, Commissioner Jalali, I, I know you have comments. It doesn't look like anyone else has questions. Commissioner Jalali, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I'd like to move us into the discussion and action portion. I hope that's all right with everybody. Um, I will, would also like to start by saying that as the councilwoman for Ward Four, uh, I represent an area of the city that has seen more than its fair share of charter school growth and presence. And this is in part due to, um, formerly industrial land uses that, uh, leave space large enough for such institutions. Um, I feel a responsibility to raise questions about the overall impacts. I think that it's important also to have school-level questions. Often the boards of those schools are responsible for scrutinizing school operations. I'm really looking at this from a land use and tax impacts, uh, and other system impacts lens. And so, um, toward that end, I just want to share a couple of concerns I have with a specific request. Um, I think folks have spoken to, um, the sort of history of granting the requests and the school has answered some questions initially about what previous requests have led to. Um, I am still concerned today by what I see as a, um, pretty significantly high bond amount request compared to others that we have approved. Um, I do believe that while our city, uh, as was explained, does not directly provide these dollars, we act as a pass-through. And then there are overall fiscal impacts immediately and longitudinally on the community. And I personally just. on the community. And I personally just really feel like those aren't fully understood and lots of folks have raised important questions about what that means for our community. The, yeah, the, the purpose of the bond as refinancing existing debt and then expanding space and renovation is an understandable goal to me, but I think that to points that my counterparts have made, there are equity issues raised by the fact that many of those are not necessarily unique problems to schools across the community, especially in our St. Paul Public Schools. I'm a little concerned about what I see as potential equity issues and the potential differences and resulting quality of facilities at this school site versus comparable sites in SPPS. Many in the community have raised concerns about enrollment impacts to SPPS. And I think that it is a rightful set of questions to be asking in terms of the additional secondary costs that I think do come up when we're doing conduit bond requests. Charter school requests often incur additional costs to our community through land use requests as the projects evolve, developing parking solutions. We've heard a little bit of history on that today, parking and traffic management issues on sites related to that. Staff time is incurred to process each conduit bond request, there are resulting issues that come as the site continues to build out. And then to the points I kind of started with, there is an impact to the tax base that our resident depends on for services through often the loss of industrially zoned property and land that fuels the things that our community needs. And as we approach our budget conversations, I'm thinking with renewed urgency around the growing needs our community has and falling revenues and other available sources we have to meet those. I do think that, that, that the case that we're, we're reviewing today raises those thematic questions to me that are ongoing and I also have specific concerns about it. So, I, I do think that it is very evident that this school is very hardworking, that it has a strong school community. I am sensitive to the broader, I think, challenge that's very clearly felt, which is that too many among families in our community and families of all different backgrounds and cultures still don't feel like they have access to a culturally affirming education. We all strongly support our partners at SPPS in trying to provide that through our traditional public school district system. I understand families and, and demand for schools that are charters with different ethnic and cultural specific backgrounds who are able to provide that education. So, I do want to be sensitive to that conversation. I think that's an important element of what we are dealing with. But the specific question here for the HRA Board, to my understanding, is essentially whether or not to be the sponsor and given the history of previous sponsorships and then some of the concerns I have about the future impacts, I don't know that I can support this request today. So, I did want to share, I'll be voting no, but share a little more about my thoughts behind that. I would also like to say, a lot of the time, we go around this table where charters come and they request information, sorry, to, not information, but conduit bonds. And we often feel like we just don't have a good enough system besides figuring out what to do on a case-by-case basis and we don't have good enough tools to manage and balance the impacts to our overall city neighborhoods, to our communities and to our, our partners at the school district and our families who depend on SPPS. And so, I would like to request the following as part of a future staff report to the HRA. It could come in a review that we share publicly, it could come in whatever form people feel is appropriate, but I don't feel like I am able to approve new expansions or similar requests until this information comes back to us. I'd like to invite my colleagues to add their ideas to what we could review, but I'd like to better understand the impacts charter expansion has had on the tax base in St. Paul. I'd really like to better understand options for restricting future charter expansion like zoning changes, requiring a conditional use permit for operation or expansion of a school and other ideas. I think it would be great if we could understand whether and how we simply issue a cap on the amount of bonds our city sponsors so that there's effectively a limit or some management to that, that we are held to. And I know there are other solutions that we can and should explore, but I would like us to actually embark on that next step no matter what happens going forward following today. I think I personally have an outsized share of charter schools and school communities within the area of the city I represent, but this is a citywide issue. It relates to our broader community's health and funding and sustainability. I think it's really important in that we owe respectful conversations to our partners across the community, but also to ask these questions in that we serve as our capacity as HRA Commissioners. So, those are my thoughts today. I'd like to know if there are other thoughts or questions, but I wanted to share that based on the discussion we've had.
Thank you, Commissioner. It looks like almost everybody has their hand up. Commissioner Yang, I believe, is the next one.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Jalali, I will be voting no with you as well. And I, I want to first off name that I love the passion and the pride that Director Hang and our leaders who are running, you know, these, are running schools like Mon College Prep Academy or schools that really preserve language and heritage for our students of color, students from, you know, different ethnic backgrounds. That is so important and I'm so supportive of that. And I would just want to name that I'm not here, you know, to fight for crumbs. When you look at what is happening holistically in our school system, for the past 10 years here, we've, the HRA Board has passed 18 HRA conduit bonds for charter schools. And for many of these schools, when you look at the student population, it's nearly 70% students who are white students with, and their student body having less students who have, who are on free and reduced lunch. While our St. Paul Public School students, the student body is like 21% white students, 66% of them on free and reduced lunch. This is, this is racism. This is like deep classism existing in our communities. We have a duty to do something about it and I am doing something about it. So, I will be supporting you.
Thank you. Commissioner Naker?
Thanks. I, I've been listening really closely to this conversation and I, I really appreciate everyone's passion for this issue.
... associated with a respiratory illness called novel coronavirus. This outbreak started in China and now has spread to several other countries, including the United States. This novel coronavirus causes respiratory illness in people and it can spread from person to person. Symptoms of this infection include fever, cough, and shortness of breath. And while most people do recover, it has led to serious illnesses and even death in some cases. Minnesota's public health community is working hard to protect you and we're asking for your help by following the same basic precautions we all use to prevent colds and flu. It's really pretty basic. Wash your hands often and well with soap and water. Cover your cough every time and stay home when you're sick. Also, if you've recently traveled to a country like China where this novel coronavirus is spreading and you have symptoms, it's really important for you to call your doctor or your healthcare provider to let them know not only about your symptoms, but your travel history. They'll work with you to assess your condition and make sure you get any treatment.
By not issuing a conduit revenue bond. So, I'm interested in that conversation. I think it's a different conversation. I think what's happening right now is we're doing kind of some reactive policymaking. It seems like we heard a lot about this issue. We got a lot of emails. The issue became very politicized and therefore we have given this project a much exponentially higher level of scrutiny than we've given any, any conduit revenue bond issue in my time on the council, on the HRA. Councilmember Prince's, Commissioner Prince is right that we have sometimes asked questions related to land use and conversions of industrial land to non, to tax-exent land. That's not the case here. And so, I think I agree with Commissioner Tao. This is, this is a very high level of scrutiny because of the politicization rather than anything about the inherent nature of the applicant, I would say, any different from the other applicants that we have granted conduit revenue bonds to. We have the right to do whatever we want. We can be wildly inconsistent and, and we have the right to do that. But I don't think we should. I mean, I think if our city is going to grow and thrive, we know that everyone in our city depends on us for predictable policy. We can set whatever policy we want, but having the ability for others to know what we're going to do and to be able to count on it staying the same for some period of time is important. And we hear that from the business community all the time, that if they know what the rules are, they can plan accordingly. And it's the same thing for schools. It's the same thing for residents. So, you know, I, I am in favor of this conversation that's been talked about. We have been talking about changing our policy, figuring out a policy for both charters, for, for conduit revenue bonds for a long time. I want to have that conversation. I don't want to change the rules in the middle of the game. And I, and I really look forward to that conversation, but I, I support this application today.
Great. I have Commissioner Tao, then Commissioner Prince, then Commissioner Brenmon. And I just want to say, since we're getting up to the 3:30 mark, I want to tell you wherever we're at, either this vote happens or we're on to the next one, I'm going to recess us at 3:28 so that we can start our council meeting at 3:30 and we'll recess till after the council meeting. And part of that is because I believe Council President Brenmon needs to be in chambers and we need to start the council meeting at 3:30. So, if, if we get to that vote or not, I, I'm guessing we're going to have to take a recess before we even vote on this. I apologize, but, you know, we want to take the time that is necessary to have these conversations. But I just want to say that ahead of time to everybody. So, thank you, Commissioner Tao. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I'm listening to all this and I think one of the simple thing that we could do is, folks who don't understand the operation of a charter school and what's going on at Mon College Prep Academy, you know, and, you know, go visit the school and go to, when they graduate, they do this great graduation ceremony where they sign, where kids, all the seniors go on stage and they, just like NBA or, or the NFL draft, where the kids would come and sign and they would reveal which college they go to, whether it's Concordia, U of M, and all the younger classmates they chair. And the amount of energy and the vision that they bring, all these activity that has helped them be very successful. These are, you know, we should, instead of trying to tear down a school, we should try to look at what they're doing well so that we can learn from it. As a, as a kid who grew up in the school system, the public school system, the school system has, at the time that I've been here, 40 years, they have the opportunity to embrace other culture, other people's history and, and teach in a way that's equitable, that not just white history or how white people see the world, but they have an opportunity to embrace other culture, other history and how everybody's connected. Had the school been doing that, I don't think that they would try to form other charter school that would create this opportunity for parents and teachers. And so, you know, I'm ready to vote on this. I'm going to support this. And I, and I agree with Council, Commissioner Naker, that we should not be changing the rule in the middle of the game. That's unfair. We don't want anybody to do that to us, ourselves, as individual, as citizen of this city. Why would we do the same thing for other people? I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Commissioner Prince?
Just, I, I want to say that to Councilmember Tao's point, this isn't about changing the rules in the middle of the game. We have talked about the fact that we don't have policies to guide our decision-making in this area. So, I want to be clear about that first. As for myself, from 2006 to 2012, I served on the board of a terrific charter school and I get to see how these schools work from the inside and I know how good they can be. I understand how incredibly good Mon College Prep Academy is and how phenomenally successful. The numbers that we're talking about here in terms of the growth of that school and the city through conduit bonds has played an important role in the growth of that school to date. So, I feel like we have made a large contribution to that effort by providing this low-cost financing. At this point, I'm sensitive to the arguments that have come forward, particularly from members of our St. Paul Board of Education that question the role of the HRA in tipping the scales toward charter schools with this low-cost financing. I am, I am not settled on the idea, but I believe that given the success of Mon College Prep Academy, that they will have, to Ms. Naker's point, I'm not trying to stop the expansion of, of this school. And by our vote today, however it goes, that expansion will go forward because a school with that kind of enrollment success and growth is not going to have any trouble getting financing for this project. I just feel that before we continue to make decisions like this, that we need to get clearer what the impact is of our decision-making. And I truly feel that I can say in this case that Mon College Prep Academy does not need our low-cost financing to grow and to continue to be a successful school. We have gotten them to this point. They will succeed. So, on that basis and on the basis of, of things that my colleagues have said, I, I will be voting no.
Commissioner Brenmon?
Thanks. I, I've, there's been a lot of repetition and I'm going to try to avoid that. I just want to be clear that I share folks' concern about the proliferation of charter schools in our state, in the metros, but specifically in St. Paul. And I share the, the need to understand the impacts it has on our community and in our public schools. My kids are students of the St. Paul Public Schools and I can feel it every day. I want to be clear that I have been objecting loudly for years about the free-for-all process that allows schools to be built in any zoning district. So, the council only gets to weigh in when it comes time for a bond, a conduit bond issuing and have asked for the PED and also the Port Authority to study this issue and make recommendations to this body so that we could, like, as I heard it mentioned earlier today, and it's something we've asked to require a conditional use permit for a school to be built in the city so that we have a chance to talk about community benefit and impact before it gets to this point because this is certainly the 11th hour and then some. But I have gotten no recommendations from either body and I think it's unacceptable. I also want to be clear, and people have mentioned this, but that the charter schools and nonprofits pay no property taxes, but they do consume city resources. And they often ask for improved infrastructures after they build their buildings in industrial areas or other lower-cost, less desirable areas. And suddenly we need to find money to put up street crossing signs and other safety measures, which are important, but they, they jump the line over our, our planned investments. That said, conduit bonds then generate some of that revenue back for the city. This project will generate about almost $70,000 at closing and then $50,000 annually afterwards, which is meaningful dollars. So, Ms., as Ms. Naker and Mr. Tao said, just kind of changing the rules at the end of the, the process for this school doesn't, isn't something I'm comfortable with doing today. Just to make a point about my concerns about charter school, which do align with what I'm hearing my colleagues say, but I do have misgivings about this. And so, I do plan to vote in support of this today, but I want to be 100% clear that I will no longer vote for a conduit bond for a charter school until the PED comes up with a recommendation for how we can manage this process. It's ridiculous that we've gotten to this point yet again.
Thank you. All right. I think we'll, maybe just go quickly over here. Is that okay, Council President?
Yep.
To finish this one matter?
Yep.
All right. I do have a few things to say before we do that. I've been mostly quiet on this. I want to echo exactly what Council, or Commissioner Brenmon just said. This is something that I know we have been struggling with at the council for a while. Obviously, conduit bonds are not our financing. It's, it's, it's our right, really. And by denying this today, likely the, the school would be able to go get these from another municipality. So, it wouldn't necessarily stop the, the project and it wouldn't stop the bonding and it wouldn't stop the financing necessarily. It would just restart the process for the, the school. I have, I'll be, I'll be blunt. I don't think this surprises everybody here because I am the, one of the most pro-public school speakers and I have been since I spent 13 years there as a student in our St. Paul Public Schools. And I also have a lot of issues with what charter schools have done to our school district and are doing to school districts across the state. That's something that changed back when the state legislature passed the charter school law, I believe probably in the 1980s or 1990s, predating my time in, in public, long predating my time in public office. And also like Council, or Commissioner Brenmon, we have been asking for a study of what this does to our, to our city and what it does to our school district as well. And I think that is something that needs to be addressed and I am going to stand with Commissioner Brenmon and say, please don't bring conduit bonds to the HRA and tell any applicant that until this happens, don't apply through the HRA or the city or the port until we have this analysis done because it's important. However, I do think that the school followed the rules. They qualify under the law and we decided in the, in the past week that we wanted to change our policy on that. I, I don't think that is fair today, even though I- I don't think that is fair today, even though I think all the arguments made by my colleagues who are voting no on this are very, very valid points, and I actually agree with them. I came into this not exactly knowing how I'd end up voting on this, but it comes down to, you know, these continued expansions to make charter schools, you know, fancier than our public schools so that they can attract students away very much bother me, and I think they negatively affect our public schools. At the same time, this is a conduit bond, which is much different than if we were contributing actual dollars, city dollars or taxpayer dollars to this. We are just contributing a rate and actually taking money as a result of it. So I'm going to be voting yes here today, but I think Director Goodman, you have heard us loud and clear on the stance of this council, and I think that's unanimous, no matter how people are voting here today, that we want, we want this issue addressed and we're done asking for it. And I think we will be voting no in the future if it's not done, so.
Understood.
With that, unless someone else has something else to say, I will, well, someone needs to make a motion. A motion, someone want to make a motion? Motion from Commissioner Tao to approve this matter. Roll call, please.
Brenmon?
Aye.
Jalali?
No.
Naker?
Aye.
Prince?
No.
Tao?
Aye.
Yang? Commissioner Yang? Did we lose her?
No, I can see, I can see her saying it. Do you want to hold up a sign?
I can't see her.
Are you on mute? Commissioner Yang voted no.
Chair Tobert?
Yes.
Four in favor, three opposed. The resolution is adopted.
All right. And I am going to recess, recess the HRA until after the council meeting. I would ask people to make sure to, that we have a quorum after because we do have things that are time-sensitive on the remainder of the meeting. So with that, we will be in recess. Thank you.
We'll call the council to order in just a couple minutes.